We're all ready to go.
All right. Greg, you good?
He's ready to go as well, sir.
Okay, all right, let's go ahead and call the work-study session for the Tempe City Council for order for June 18, 2020. Due to the concerns over the COVID-19 exposure, the city has implemented measures to protect our community, including the closing of the council chambers and limiting public attendance to electronic means only. Members of the public may view the live meeting proceedings on Tempe Channel 11. Attend, you can also attend the meeting virtually through the Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/clerk. More information and/or submit a written comments to the City of Tempe Speaker Comment Card on the tempe.gov/clerk webpage. Now we'll go ahead and turn it over. The first item on our agenda is a call to the audience for the issue review session. Members do have up to three minutes to address the council on the items listed on this agenda. I will look to our Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on the items that are on this agenda?
No, Mayor, we do not.
All right. Saying none, I'll go ahead and close that portion of the call to the audience and go on to the second item, which is the issue review items. And the first update is COVID-19 update. I will hand this over to our city manager, Mr. Ching.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As an initial matter, I would guess, I would just ask you, Mr. Mayor, if you were interested, at least at the beginning, to speak to the proclamation or at your direction, I'm happy to give a brief update regarding some of the goings-on here at the city.
You can go ahead and do that, that's fine.
Okay, will do. To that point, Mr. Mayor, this past Monday, June 15, marked the beginning of the City of Tempe's limited reopening of certain specified city facilities, specifically the library, the multi-generational centers at Escalante, the West Side Multi-Generational Center, and the North Tempe Multi-Generational Center. These openings were with some significant modifications, including the requirement that all staff and visitors wear masks, that there would be ample hand sanitizer stations in addition to obviously, public access to restrooms for hand washing, that that total numbers of visitors would be limited in order to ensure physical distancing. And a requirement are, yeah, there would be modifications to work areas to create physical barriers between staff and the public to limit the risk of transmission. After having visited all the facilities on Monday, I'm happy to say that what I witnessed was that the things that we had put into place actually were being followed, that the distances were in fact being kept, that staff was prepared, there was even a couple of kids camps that were taking place at our multi-generational centers where it was clear that that the guidelines were being followed. So that's good news. I also wanted to report that we are looking to open the pools that the city currently operates this Saturday, again, where applicable similar restrictions would be in place. Also, in addition to those public facilities, the Household Products Collection Center, as well as the compost yard are also both open to the public. Those are facilities that have limited interactions between staff and public, so we felt that, given the important role that they play in the community, that it made sense to go ahead and have them reopen as well. We are continuing to study and react to the numbers of reported cases, et cetera, and looking at criteria to see whether or not future openings will be happening in the coming weeks. So we will report that to all of you, Mayor and Council, as well as the public at the point where where those decisions will be made. So that's what I have from a COVID-19 update from the City of Tempe.
Well, thank you, Andrew, for that. I'm trying to. Thank you for that, and I do want to mention about the proclamation that was issued. ... gov/coronavirus to find more information and also look under the "For Business" button. This is in response to the current pandemic and the current state as we continue to see the numbers rise for the COVID virus. And I see a hand up, Vice Mayor QB.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I had a question or two for the city manager. So Andrew, I wanted to ask, these are questions that come directly from residents, and one was to, for us to clarify how masks on transit will work if buses are going through multiple jurisdictions and one of those jurisdictions doesn't have a mask policy, how does that work? The second question being, I know our, the focus will be on education, but how will enforcement work if if there's a need for it?
Thank you, Vice Mayor QB, members of council. My understanding with regards to transit and especially transit that moves through multiple jurisdictions is that Valley Metro is in the process of creating their own policies for ridership that are going to address that issue. So we are going to be looking to them, at least initially, since it's, they run the integrated transit system on behalf of the various communities here in the valley, that we would look to their guidance for that, first of all. Secondly, as far as the enforcement piece goes, I think, I appreciate that you mentioned that that education is going to, especially at the beginning, now that, you know, we've just had this proclamation effective earlier today, that we want to give residents and community members and those who would be potentially susceptible to the proclamation, ample opportunity to understand what it is to to get the information made as clear as possible, to give businesses that are affected an opportunity to react to it and be ready. So certainly, I think, within those first few days, we've got to do quite a bit of education. If at the point that there is a need for enforcement, right now, the default enforcement for misdemeanors in the City of Tempe would be the police. However, and I think this is important to note, however, we are also mindful of and understanding of the concerns that the public may have about, you know, especially given the climate in today, of today, to insert police into situations where their presence alone could have the the effect of escalation. So to the extent that we want to de-escalate and keep this education-oriented, we, meaning staff, are continuing to have conversations about some of the best approaches and at what point would it make sense to have police in force, because like I said, it is a, ultimately, if if education fails and enforcement is warranted, it is designated as a misdemeanor in the proclamation, so we are certainly mindful of that.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and just, I know we're offering PDF files for businesses to print out posters, but is there also an opportunity for us to print out a lot of them and offer them up to businesses?
Thank you, thank you for the question. I think the answer would be, again, if if that is something that that is desired by businesses, if we can assist them in obtaining compliance and if and if our provision of not just PDF files that they can download, but actually physically printing them out or assisting in that would help, we would certainly be open to that conversation.
Thank you. Before we move forward, I want to go ask Councilmember Arredondo Savage if she can update us on, I know they had a Valley Metro Board meeting today, and she's cer, she is our representative, Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, very happy to. We we definitely did have a very robust discussion today about the use of masks on buses and on rail, and there was a lot of, not just discussion, not just about, you know, how we move forward and what that looks like, but some of the other cities and some of the other transit agencies that have done done similar things and wanting to get best practices from them. So we did give direction, the board did give direction to Valley Metro to mandate face mask, to mandate masks, any type of mask, face coverings, that was what they had intended. And basically, moving forward, the compliance will be mostly by what I think our our city manager mentioned was, would be compliance by education, by marketing, by signage, and just really strong encouragement. And one of the things that we're, we need to make sure that we have in the future, and it still isn't necessarily set in stone yet, is how we can provide face masks for all riders. We know we're able to probably do it at the transit centers and maybe through the cities, and but really wanting to ultimately do it on buses, at least for, you know, a set amount of time, so to really encourage that. There was actually, when it came to some enforcement, some kind of horror stories that we heard with other transit agencies, and and that's why this method of compliance was chosen and will be moving forward with. So I'll keep everybody apprised as we move forward. I think they're going to probably roll it out on July 1, and the reason being is I think they just want to make sure we get everything set in stone, we get all the signage right, the marketing materials together, and then then everybody can be on the same page moving forward. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Anyone have any other questions for Andrew Ching, our city manager? Saying none, we'll now turn over to the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission update, as well as the Youth Town Hall. I was, I believe we have either Naomi or Marie Raymond is with us, and I know we have some Mayor's Youth Advisory members that are going to be presenting a PowerPoint to us, I believe.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, this is Adrian Casio, MIAC advisor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time, and I want to just extend my appreciation to the MIAC members. Typically, summertime, MIAC is not active, so as you know, we had to reschedule, and and I am glad all three of our commissioners were are here and will be presenting today on some annual updates of the year and also providing some highlights on U-Town Hall action plan. So here today, we have Reagan Hatch, our MIAC Chair, Isis Kelly, our MIAC Vice Chair, and we have Shay Cataro, our Youth Town Hall Chair. Let me get my presentation up here.
Adrian, can you, after Reagan, who's the next person? I saw, I know Shay's there, who's the other one?
So we have Isis Kelly.
Isis, okay, great.
Isis is our Vice Chair.
Great, well, welcome to all of you.
Thank you. Just to confirm, are you able to see my, the?
Yes.
Presentation, okay, perfect. All right, we'll have a, I'm gonna have each of the members just introduce themselves, share a little bit more about themselves.
My name is Reagan Hatch, I'm a, I just graduated from Marcos, and he's a, I'm going to NAU in the fall, and I am the MIAC Chair, and this is my third year in MIAC.
Welcome, Reagan, good to hear from you. Can't see you, but good to hear from you.
Um, my name is Isis Kelly, I just finished my freshman year at Macrinthoff High School. I am MIAC's Vice Chair, and this is my, I'm about to start third year of MIAC.
Great, thank you. Shay?
And then, hi, my name is Shay Cataro. I am a rising senior at Fernand del Sol High School. I am the Youth Town Hall Chair, and I am entering my third year on MIAC.
Great, hey, if you guys could, just make sure you turn down your volume so it's not echoing so much, thank you. All righty. Take it away, Adrian, or Reagan, or?
All right, so for some MIAC history, MIAC was established in 1980 in response to diverse youth challenges. It's a commission of 24 members from eighth to 12th grade, and opportunities to be a voice for Tempe's youth by providing input and initiatives affecting youth. And some updates for this year, we learned a lot about the City of Tempe. We held a retreat at City Hall Boardroom. MIAC got to tour City Hall, city departments presented to MIAC. And then this year, we appreciate that we got to work with the city budget process. Mark Dane Wydell Holmes facilitated a Budget 101 training. Lucas Steikowski, the intern, helped develop a video to highlight the city budget process, and MIAC commissioners participated in the Start Tool survey. Some updates, other updates this year, Shay and I got to attend the National Mayor's Youth Summit in LA, where we got to meet with other youth councils and talk about their commissions. We attended the League of Arizona Cities and Towns for Youth, and CARE7 came and did a training with MIAC.
Okay, so then, just a little Youth Town Hall background. So Youth Town Hall is an annual event that gives teens an opportunity to discuss current challenges and opportunities that they are facing. So we gather students from the Tempe Union High School District, the Tempe Elementary District, and the Kyrene Middle School, and they are all invited through their activities, principals, and school faculty. So what the students do is to identify solutions and recommend actions to address challenges that MIAC identifies, and so MIAC will then plan and facilitate the event in partnership with community partners. So for Youth Town Hall this year, it was held on Tuesday, February 25, 2020, at the Tempe Center for the Arts. Some new additions that we added included the Youth Resource Showcase and a networking workshop by Alberto Olivas, and over 90 participants gathered to address the following topics, which we identified using the Start Tool, and these topics were police and youth engagement, student life, and teen professional development.
I'm sorry about that. One of the students, when we asked for a survey at Youth Town Hall, one of the students said, during school, I have had friends that go to the restroom to cry or have had panic attacks in the restroom because they are so overwhelmed. One of the questions we asked on the survey was, I know how to positively manage negative feelings. Over 40% of students surveyed that they do not agree or strongly agree that they can manage negative feelings. Another student said, how can kids feel more comfortable with counselors? Our council recommendation is to concret, to increase the capacity of CARE7 specialists and youth involvement with youth specialists. One of the strategies is having full-time youth specialists on campus to allow more youth engagement activities, include youth and youth specialist interview and selection process, and to create programming for youth specialists to connect with general student body that address emotional wellbeing, and create a youth specialist communication plan with students. This supports quality-of-life performance measure 3.37. The reason the recommendation matters is by having youth specialists able to facilitate discussions in class, we increase the amount of youth who feel comfortable asking for help, and to decrease the stigma of mental health in, mental health issues like depression, stress, anxiety, et cetera. Students will more effectively manage negative feelings.
Okay, and then our next area identified was that teens want more internships. So one of the quotes that we pulled was, as a member of Tempe Youth Leadership, I've taken a liking to local government and would like to continue experiencing it even when the program ends. So after we took our survey of teens that would be interested in internships through the City of Tempe, we found that over 70% of students surveyed expressed interest in an internship experience with the City of Tempe. And this kind of culminated into the final question, how can teens get more involved in internship? So our council recommendation is to continue and expand the Career Ready Tempe Program. So this would include adding placements within city departments in addition to the business placements already in progress, to prepare for intern application and interview processes, to have diverse opportunities and job shadowing, and lastly, to expand eligibility to all students attending Tempe Union High School District schools regardless of their residency. And lastly, this recommendation matters because more students will feel better prepared for the workforce. In addition, students will gain valuable experience that increases their skillset and knowledge of city government, and students who go to school in Tempe can then work in Tempe and contribute their talent.
Police and youth engagement. Um, during the survey, I used on how one of the students had said, one time my friend was pulled away by an officer, and I felt threatened and worried as I thought he was in trouble, but the cop just wanted to let him know something kind. And another one of the questions we asked at the survey at Youth Town Hall was, how do you feel when you see a Tempe police officer? Only 20% of students surveyed, they expressed feeling of feeling safe when they see a police officer. Another student said, is there any way for me to get involved in police department today, which may decrease negative perceptions toward Tempe PD? Our council recommendation is to create an ongoing dialogue with Tempe PD in person through social media and community conversation. Some of the strategies is to keep officers on campus with more opportunities to engage with students, advertise relevant content to students regarding police engagement activities and events, students to help run social media accounts to post police engagement, events, and activities, and to include a youth position on the Citizens Panel for Police with same capabilities as other board members. MIAC, this council recommendation supports strong community connection performance measure 2.06. The reason this recommendation matters is opportunities for youth to engage with Tempe PD may increase positive perceptions and trust. Youth-led social media will ensure relevant content to youth and increase awareness of police-related events and activities. Having youth representation on the Citizens Panel for Police will allow for a platform for youth to be a part of decision-making and to increase knowledge of processes. And MIAC's outreach for youth engagement. So we would like to include and involve more Youth Town Hall and MIAC. And by doing this, we can use social media to promote events and activities and more outreach to our schools, which was from our evaluation feedback from Youth Town Hall. And to expand MIAC's capacity to engage more Tempe youth, I have youth-led social media efforts through the City of Tempe, support in allocating funding through sponsorships and grant applications, and modify commission ordinances to promote more inclusive and diverse membership. And one of these ordinance changes to support MIAC would be to expand eligibility where students are chosen by Tempe zip codes and not solely by what school they attend. And some of these recommendations matter to increase budget will allow MIAC to support more students, Youth Town Hall, and other youth engagement activities. The youth-led social media will ensure relevant content to youth and increase youth's digital engagement. And then also on the MIAC website, we do have video content that will demonstrate how we can create content catered for social media use. And a more inclusive MIAC will support the cities.
I think we're losing you, Reagan. Or, I guess, who is I, ISIS, are you speaking, or? You guys are? You guys there?
Hi, it's Adrian. Uh, we just finished the presentation. I think ISIS is on, going on mute there.
Okay.
So we just wanted to open up if anyone has any questions or comments at this point.
Okay, well, first, I want to thank all of you for your participation. I do want to say hello, and great job to both Reagan and Shay and ISIS. I really do appreciate everything. I just want to point out that as Reagan and Shay mentioned, that they were able to go to the Youth United States Conference of Mayors, the First Youth Summit, if you will, with me and with myself and our staff this last summer. I'm very proud of both of you for not only attending that groundbreaking event, I just, I want to, I wish you all the best, and before I forget, Reagan, I want to say congratulations on your graduation. I know you're going to do well up at NAU and be a good lumberjack. And the presentation you guys really presented is fantastic. It hits so many chords with what the council is looking at, so much so that when you guys looked at a recommendation regarding additional CARE7 youth specialists and involvement, we all know this council, as well as our city staff, how important it is, how counselor specialists are to the school system, and I really want to let you guys know that the council did make a commitment to keeping the the seven youth specialists that you guys referenced. I do also like that you mentioned the idea of creating a communication plan with students. I think that would be fantastic. You cannot have enough communication, especially today. But I don't know some of the criterias for these specialists right now, but I would tell you, joint communications plans that you guys proposed, sounds like a good way to get students more engaged when it comes to MIAC and our communities. I think that's fantastic. I know another thing you talked about is internships and expanding programs for internships for youth, and I know that Councilman Arredondo Savage has been a big part of this, as well as the council, about Career Ready Tempe. And I know we're looking at getting more businesses signed up to be involved with Career Ready Tempe. Last year was the first year, I believe, now that we have a program established for Career Ready, that we're looking to get some more businesses signed up, and I know more businesses want to be involved, so there could be additional opportunities for the youth. So I mean, there's so many great attributes to what you guys did with your presentation and the Youth Town Hall, and I opened it up to my council colleagues, if you guys have any questions or comments for the MIAC members? Yes, Vice Mayor QB.
Thanks so much for your presentation, everyone, and I'm really intrigued with the idea of expanding opportunities to include placement within city departments, our expanding our Career Ready internships, because I know we've struggled a little bit, either to get placement, to find good positions, or to find students that want to those positions, so I think that's a fantastic idea. I'm also really interested in the idea about students serving on whatever Advisory Commission or Citizens Review Board we establish, once we we get to have that discussion, I think it's an idea to have a student representative. And the question I have is, um, did you discuss at all SRO positions at the high schools, and what do you think about the SROs? I know the youth special, you spoke a lot about, but did discussion center at all on the SROs? Because I know there is a discussion at the school, at Tempe Union High School District Board about SROs, and would you care to weigh into that tonight?
Thank you, Vice Mayor QB, for your question, and definitely, SROs are something that the MIAC and even some of the students at U-Town Hall were discussing. So I think when they were, you know, saying that they would like to maintain some of that presence, I think it was more specifically with SROs in mind, but also with the ability to have a different but also with the ability to have different opportunities to engage with the SROs. And we know that as it stands, there, SROs do have some activities that they do with students. And if you get a chance to review the Youth Town Hall Action Plan, in there, it speaks a bit more with what students, some of their experiences with even with SROs, or if they know their SRO, or if they've met them. So, we're hoping that it provides some guidance. You know, it's going to be different what we've heard from some of the schools, what students have, the kind of engagement that they've seen. So, and I do want, you know, to keep in mind that this, the feedback that we received was in February, and we know that, you know, in light of recent events, you know, we're not sure what perceptions are, you know, what students would, how they would feel now, which kind of goes to the point of, we would hope that we can continue to have ongoing dialogue. In fact, I will be meeting with, or speaking to Chief Moyer, who reached out to us and has interest in some of the recommendations. So, we appreciate that, you know, she's reaching out and maybe we'll kind of discuss more what this could look like.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And before, I'm going to, I see some hands up and I have a list. You know, as a fellow alumni from the Mayor's Youth Advisor Commission, I'm going to call on my fellow alumni, Ms. Councilmember Arlene Chin. She has her hand up for questions. Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank all of the members of MYAC and Adrian for your work and for leading and being a voice for our youth in our community. I learned a long time ago that youth voices matter and we pay attention. I just want to thank you all for your leadership and to encourage you all to continue your participation. Thank you. And, well, I should say, I, I appreciate that I was a part of that historical presentation in this slide.
We appreciate, we appreciate that as well. And thank you for the interview, Councilmember Arlene Chin, that we were able to show at the Youth Town Hall.
Okay, we're going to go to Councilmember Arredondo Savage and then Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. As I see you have used your powers to let Arlene go before me, just because she's an alumni, I get it. That's okay.
Actually, I didn't see your hand up until then.
Well, and if she's-
And I'm being directed by your-
It's historical, so, you know, it's probably an age thing anyway. So, anyway, hey, Adrian and team and Reagan and ISIS and Shay, I just can't thank you enough. I mean, you guys always are tackling kind of, what I'd like to say, a little bit difficult and sensitive topics, and it really does make a difference. There's been so many things that I think that the city's been able to do and implement and then enhance because of your feedback. I mean, it's so valuable to have, make sure everybody in our community has a voice. And, and what you guys do allows that to happen. So, you know, for you taking the time to get involved, to utilize and enhance your leadership skills is really spot on. I thought you talked about some really great things. We're so proud of Career Ready, but realize that we can grow that and, and, you know, make sure that we're touching more kids as we go forward, making sure we're building positive relationships with our police and our youth. And, and I love what you said about youth specialists and how they, how important that they are to the campuses and really engaging and building relationships with the students. And, you know, that was always the intent and we want to make sure that they continue to do what they do for a long period of time in the years to come. But it's, it's really great and refreshing to hear, hear from you all and, you know, from fellow students. It really does make a difference and it's really impactful for me, so I'm really grateful. And Adrian, I just want to say thank you for your continued energy. I mean, when you came to the city of Tempe, I couldn't be more pleased with, with your enthusiasm and solid work and the way that you're able to connect with the, with our youth. It's, it really shows and you continue to do a phenomenal job. So, again, I'm really grateful for the team and everything that you have done and continue to do. Keep up the great work and I, I hope we'll have follow-up conversations in the very near future, so we can make sure that we're implementing a lot of your ideas and feedback. So, thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have had the good fortune of facilitating the Youth Town Halls over the years and it's wonderful to see how far the program has grown. Thanks to all of you for your hard work and commitment to this valuable program. And I look forward to the program continuing to grow in the future.
Great. Thank you so much. And again, to Reagan, Shay and ISIS, I got to tell you, thank you so much. You know, we look forward to continuing the engagement with your peers, with your colleagues and your schools. And please get the message out, we're always looking to have more individuals involved. So, thank you so much and I really appreciate it, appreciate it, and good luck to everybody.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Alrighty, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, is our feature agenda items. Does anybody have any? Seeing none. Next item on our agenda is our call to the audience for the committee of the whole items listed under section four A and four B. There are no items under these sections this evening. The next section is items in progress. So, I will now turn, uh, items in progress, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, you have an update for us?
Do I have an update for you, Mayor?
Just asking.
Hey, we continue to work and I just wanted, well, you know, you give me the opportunity, I will make a couple of comments. I think that we are doing a lot of really great work. We're putting together a final document and I think everybody's going to be really pleased. So, thank you to Vice Mayor QB for jumping on that committee and Councilmember Keating. I think we have really implemented some really great things and are getting some really impressive feedback from our staff and we'll be able to implement that throughout the city. So, it, to come soon. Thank you.
All right, Councilor Navarro, I think you're still on the line. Do you have any updates on the ADOT Park pit, as well as the arterial rights, right of ways?
Nothing on ADOT. I want to keep that open because we're, it's a slow-moving progress with that, obviously, because we had to do some deals with ADOT and make that thing happen, then Access. So, we're still in the midst of that, letting those things happen. With the right-of-way walls, the question is, yeah, it's on the five-year CIP. I know we're going to be discussing the details of that. And probably my question is, does it need to be still on the committee of the whole until those details come out? Verification on that.
Okay. The, now the next one is, City, I think we're going to extend, I mean, extension on the mental health. I'm going to turn that over. We were making some good progress on that with Councilmember Adams and Arredondo Savage. So, I'm going to, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, you have an update for us?
Obviously, I think the COVID-19 put us behind schedule just a little bit, but we were just getting ready to get, get our traction moving. We've got all the stakeholders together. So, we're hoping to have, you know, follow-up with a virtual meeting here in the very near future. So, we will probably need at least a ninety-day extension for that. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Keating, do you have any updates on the Human Trafficking Committee?
Well, it's all there in writing, but I do like to hear myself talk, so. We did have a very good meeting recently. We understand that, obviously, you know, budgetary concerns are at the forefront of all our minds now, so we're kind of scaling it back just a little bit. We want to, at the very least, come up with an education campaign in our schools and in our businesses with the existing resources that we have. We brought in a human trafficking expert from ASU, and she provided staff with a ton of different resources that are already existing in our community that we could utilize. So, I know staff's kind of going through those and figuring out what exactly we can do and what we should do in the city of Tempe with regards to human trafficking prevention and victim services. So, we had a really positive meeting, excited about it, and hopefully we'll get another one here in the next ninety days or so, and keep moving forward.
All right. With that.
Mr. Mayor, any question?
Yes, Vice Mayor QB.
Sorry, I have my hand up, but I know it's hard to necessarily go back and forth. For Councilmember Keating, just had a question about the need for an advocacy center. I know that the Family Justice Commission prepared a report on that. The working group discussed that or met with any of the Family Justice Commission members to discuss the need for an advocacy center from their perspective?
Yes, the Family Justice Commission is a stakeholder in the working group and has been present at all of our working group meetings.
Thank you. There was one member that sent me an email and I'll just refer it to you from Mary O'Grady, who's a commission member. But I'll just, I'll refer it over.
Yeah, I know Mary very well. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Okay, cool. Thanks.
Councilmember Adams, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the County Island update, we will be meeting again at the end of July. And we've had a lot of interest from the community. I'm very excited about this. So, we will be moving forward with this item and I'm really optimistic about the County Island becoming the city of Tempe. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alrighty, moving on, I do have one announcement I was going to call upon Chief Reese regarding Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Insurance Services Office. And Chief Reese, are you there?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, a few months ago, we provided you with a quick update on the information we received regarding our reclassification of our insurance service office rating, which is also referred to as ISO. And I told you that we'd be back to bring the good news and we would have a representative from ISO to do a formal presentation tonight. I would like to introduce Stephanie Ruszkanski. She is the Western Regional Manager from ISO and she is here to make a presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Hello.
I'm pleased to be here today to congratulate the city of Tempe on obtaining their Class One ISO rating. ISO ratings range from Class One to Class Ten, with one being the highest rating a department can achieve. In addition to being a Class One community, Tempe was the first internationally accredited department from the Center of Public Safety Excellence. As you'll see on the next slide, ISO's PPC program measures the effectiveness of public fire protection. Since nineteen seventy, we've been conducting these evaluations and measuring the overall capability of the fire department. Better fire protection leads to lower losses and it's used by insurance companies to establish accurate premiums for both homeowner and commercial property insurance. Our evaluations are done every five years. Accreditation agencies become accredited after a peer review of their documents and onsite assessment and participation in a public hearing. Those evaluations are also done every five years. Nationwide, there are three hundred and eighty-eight Class One communities. That makes it less than one percent of all rated communities that ever achieved that designation. For CIPSE, there are two hundred and eighty-four accredited agencies. And there are only about ninety-five communities that have both the Class One and the accreditation as of this publication. This puts Tempe Fire Department in sort of an unofficial Hall of Fame of accredited Class One departments. And I'm really pleased to present that new rating to them. An ISO rating is a community fire suppression evaluation. We use national standards. That's the National Fire Protection Association, American Waterworks, and the Association of Public Communication Officials. Those reference standards measure multiple areas. We looked at the fire department, all of their operations. We sifted through training records, response records. We looked at the community's water supply. We did flow testing. We looked at community risk reduction, which is all the fire prevention, public safety education, and fire investigation activities happening in the community. And finally, we looked at the 911 center, who answers the calls. So, what does this all mean? Insurers use ISO ratings to write new business, to review fire loss, and to offer appropriate coverage to homes and businesses. Most homeowner insurance policies are done annually. And so, any homeowner's insurance policy that renews after June first will have the Class One rating attached to it. Commercial insurance policies will also reflect the new rating. Those can renew annually, although some policies are on a three-to-five-year schedule. Any resident in Tempe or any business owner can contact their insurance agent to find out more and to make sure that they're obtaining that new rating. And Chief, I'd like to turn it over to you and really just congratulate you again on obtaining a Class One rating as well as being an accredited community.
Thank you so much for that presentation. In closing, I just want to share with you that when I was first notified that we were going through our ISO rating review, I had gone through several in the past and we had been close. And I was obviously hopeful we would get a Class One. I reached out immediately to Deputy Chief Chris Snow, Captain Joe Escantrias, who led our team, the Tempe team, through this, and Strategic Management and Diversity Director Rosen Chauasty, who is also the Intermunicipal Utilities Director at the time. What you have up here is, I will not go through each individual by name, but I felt it, they had to be recognized for the hard work they do every single day. This does just not happen overnight. This, this is a team effort and it happens every single day for us to achieve a Class One rating. As I said, we've been there so many times in the past. We have been very close so many times in the past. But I will go over the areas here, commuter, computer maintenance management systems, the waters utility supervisors, obviously, fire medical rescue, water utilities technicians, the data acquisition team. And last, I want to thank the representative, the field representative, who assisted us through all of this work and all of the efforts. That is Susan Wildrick, I believe I pronounced that right. I hope I did. But Susan has been truly an advocate for us. Last, I want to congratulate Tempe Fire Medical Rescue and the city of Tempe for being, as was indicated earlier, one of only ninety-five Class One accredited fire departments in the country. With that, we can, I'll turn it over to the city manager and if there are any questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams, do you have your hand up? And then Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, I just want to compliment Greg Reese and the entire fire department for your incredible work. This is so prestigious, this award, and I'm so proud of you winning it and you deserve it. And thank you so much. And I also really want to drive home the fact that this is going to save the rest of Tempe money in that their insurance rates should go down based on this incredible fire rating. So, I just want to thank you all for your hard work and, and for being, obviously, the best department in the country as far as I'm concerned. So, good job, good work. Keep it up.
All right, Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Hey, thank you, Mayor Mitchell. Hey, Chief Reese, I just want to just give you a really big thank you for your leadership because things like this don't happen by themselves. And, and I know you, you're a team player and you mentioned everybody that has really taken part of that and I get that and I appreciate that and I agree with you. But it does take a really solid leader to make these things happen and to get those individuals to want to follow you. And you do, and you care a lot about this community. You care a lot about our people and it shows. So, this, like I think Stephanie said, makes you, Chief Reese, a Hall of Famer. It makes us a Hall of Famer, I think, in the sense of what we're able to do within our community. Because I got to tell you, Jennifer mentioned it a little bit. I've been in the insurance business for a few years and I cannot tell you of any other city that I know off the top of my head that is rated a number one. And it's so cool that we have that option now. So, I would suggest to all of our residents and to everybody that owns a commercial property or in the city of Tempe to make sure you tell your insurance carrier to check your ISO rating because she's right. Hopefully, it will save you a little bit of money and it's from the hard work and of this really big team that continues to work hard to do what's right for the city of Tempe. So, you've earned it. You worked hard for it. Thanks, Chief and team. This is something that we should all really be proud of. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. And Chief, thank you for your leadership as well. We're really lucky to have you and have the great team of the men and women, the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue- the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue, plus the men and women of the entire city workforce. So we're very lucky and blessed. So thank you all for everything. Anybody else have anything for Chief Reese or City Manager Chin? Andrew, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My only announcement tonight is to, again, recognize that tomorrow, for the first time, the city of Tempe will be recognizing Juneteenth as a city holiday, and therefore, several most city offices and functions will be closed in recognition and honor of that day. Thank you.
All right. Our next meeting for the work study session will be August 20th, 2020. With that, have everyone have a safe night. We are adjourned.